Oh, okay. Problem meeting started. Rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Let the record reflect that we only have one board member missing, and that's Mr. And we'll do our student rec information.
So, our spring sports season has started with track and softball starting, and baseball and golf start next Monday.
Next week on Wednesday, our band leaves for their trip to Florida and don't, and won't return until the following Tuesday. And the band and orchestra have a regional concert tomorrow. And the end of the third quarter is next Thursday, and there's also no school next Friday. So, we have a long weekend.
I like the smile that says it all. Thank you, girls. 5.0, agenda additions and deletions. Mr. Carey?
Madam Chair, I'd like to remove 11.4 at this time.
That's it?
Yep.
Okay. 6.0, visitor input. Was there anyone on the list?
Yeah.
I don't have a name.
Oh. Oh, sorry.
Oh.
I have nothing yet this time.
Thank you. 7.0, approve the agenda.
I'll move.
I second it.
Peterson and Sather. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. 8.0, approve the minutes of the regular meeting of Monday, February 27. Lotteger and Sather. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion.
I'll abstain. I wasn't here.
Thank you. 9.0, business office affairs. 9.1, approve the treasurer's report for the month of February and the first check writing of March. Our treasurer is absent. I'll give you the highlights as I sound. For the month of February, shows receipts of $1,445,259.33, dispersments of $587,842.48, And for the month of March, dispersments of $89,423.3. I move that we accept the treasurer's report. Putzel and Peterson. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. 10.0, personnel. 10.1, accept the notice of retirement of Christine Beckstrom.
Christine Beckstrom was a speech pathologist for the last 16 years. As you can see in my notes below, school districts have not had any success in rehiring speech pathologists in the last few years and are going to, it's called, a telepresence method of delivering those services to our students. It's delivered through the NLC. So, at this time, I would recommend that you don't fill this position.
Can I get a motion to accept her retirement?
I'll make that motion and also have a federal service by NLC.
Thank you. I'll support Peterson and Putzel. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. 10.2, accept the notice of retirement of Elizabeth Beyondich.
Mrs. Beyondich has been a fire slash health teacher for this district for the last 24 years, which is looking to retire. She retired, I believe, was last meeting from her coaching position as well in volleyball. This is effective at the end of the year as well.
I will make a motion to accept the resignation. Mrs. Beyondich was wonderful. Was one of my teachers as well.
Is there support?
I will support, and can I add a letter of appreciation for her years of dedication to our school district?
Yes, ma'am. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. 10.3, approve ECSE aid appointment of Kerry Lamourier.
This is a new position over in our early childhood program. It gets reimbursed through special ed. Just one of those needed positions for individuals too.
Just for clarification on the paperwork, can you change the interview date?
Oh, did I put a bad name?
Oh, two dozen seconds.
Just so we're sure we have that clean.
Yes.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Sather and Peterson. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. 10.4, approve, excuse me, approve the appointment of Jason Ness to the Joint Cable Board.
Jason is, of course, our network administrator here. We've had an open position on the board for probably about nine months, and he requested, he requested that he be on the board.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there support?
Will support it.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. 10.5, approve 2017 spring extracurricular assignments.
Madam Chair, as of right now, I think this pretty much covers all of our sports. We will see in the coming days, weeks, what participation numbers are if we have to add. But as of right now, the current levels that I'm showing here, it's going to be pretty close to being done with this motion here.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I will make the motion.
Is there support?
I'll support.
Any discussion?
The only question I have is the last one says stipend.
Oh, sorry about that. Study hall is a stipend position, but if I would have put a couple more spaces in there, it's half the stipend.
I get it. That's what that is, is a .5. I thought it was .5. To be honest. Sorry. Thanks, Jim.
Any further discussion?
I think I hit space bar a couple more times.
Yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. 10.6, approve the close-up request.
Madam Chair, the board is already, every other year, our close-up goes out to Washington, DC. It's part of the program, and I'll let Mrs. Krebs speak more to it, but part of the program, the advisor gets to go if they have 10 participants. And when they don't, that, that trip expenses fall on the school. In the past years, when we've had these situations come up, we have been able to supplement that with money from our school store. Our school store doesn't currently make money anymore, so that's not because of the, what we can and can't sell in there anymore. It's dictated. So, I'm going to bring Ms. Krebs up to give you more information, but...
And I do have to revise the amount. I just recently talked to the close-up advisor, and they're putting $320 towards mine, so it'd only be $400. I probably can handle the $5.70. I have been working diligently to try to get these kids. Their money's needed in fundraising. We've done numerous fundraising activities. I still have one more coming up. April 1st, we're doing a prom fundraiser for youth dresses. Right now, I only have five dresses, so I don't know how that is going to go and how that's going to turn out. So, right now, I'm just looking for $400 to cover the cost of my trip.
How many days are you gone?
We are gone the 23rd through the 28th, so a week, a little less than a week.
Okay. Are you on vacation in that timeframe, or we're still paying your wage for that also then?
Yes.
Thank you.
I would like to make a motion for the $405.70, for the remaining amount.
Sather and Addy for $405.70, correct? Thank you. Any further discussion?
You just think it's a great thing? Good luck? Have a good time?
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. 10.7, accept notice of retirement of Nancy Walden.
Ms. Walden has been a professional A in our district for the last 12 years, and she is also wishing to retire at the end of the school year.
Is there a motion?
I will make that motion through the board. Thanks as well. I have the privilege of working with her, and she works really well with the students.
I will second that.
Lotteger and Sather. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. 11.0, new business. 11.1, approve the request for the summer adapt program.
This is something that we have typically done every year. They ask, as part of their summer adapt program, they ask to use one of our Suburbans and some classroom space to accommodate their programming. I think it's a good thing for the kids, so I would recommend that we move forward with that.
I'll make the motion. I'll support.
Peterson and Addy. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. 11.2, discussion on collaboration.
In light of our last study session, we had, we talked a little bit about collaboration in several areas, programming and transportation being two of the major ones. And we've cooperated with many local school districts in the area in various of academic arts and athletics, and all of our cooperative efforts have been designed to maximize choices and opportunities for our students. And I believe we should continue to use these cooperative efforts and sit down with the Virginia School Board to discuss if there's additional areas of cooperation between the two districts. The purpose of these discussions will be discover additional opportunities which will enrich the educational opportunities for our students. In addition, there may be additional opportunities which may benefit our taxpayers. It's important for the Gilbert School Board to cooperate and agree to sit down and meet publicly with the Virginia School Board for the purpose of having a professional and respectful dialogue on how the total educational opportunities for our students may be improved. We will be working with an outside facilitator to moderate this meeting, and we will advise boards in public as soon as the date, time, and location are determined. A similar statement is being read as we speak over in Virginia. I have met with the superintendent there. And I guess the main thing is, you know, some of the things that we talked about in that study session were, like I said before, I mean, the transportation's a big thing for us right now, and as well as the opportunities educationally for our students. Maybe nothing will come of it, maybe something will come of it, but I think it's worth a discussion anyway. See where it goes.
Madam Chair, if I may. What's the motion you're looking for here? Just to facilitate this meeting with the Virginia School Board?
We're not necessarily looking for a motion. I mean, we're just, I'm just telling you that we're going to set up a meeting and we'll see where it goes. It's worth conversation anyway.
Is there any timeframe in mind, how soon this might happen?
I can't tell you that we, we're looking for a facilitator at this time to help us out, and a lot of, a lot of the timeframe is going to depend on when that individual's
Thank you. 11.3, discussion on administrative recommendations. So, in your packet are the recommendations that originated with the presentation that we've seen a couple of times now and that we've already had at least one conversation And we said we'd bring it to the meeting. Where do you want to begin?
Well, I guess, Madam Chair, if I may, to start the conversation, we had certainly talked about what's on the paper in front of you, as well as there were some other things that were brought up to go along with it. And one of the big things that was brought up was the collaborative talks with transportation and as well as curriculum, which I think we just, I just addressed a little while ago. I didn't change that document that's in front of you for the purpose of, that's what we talked about that night, so I didn't. But it's certainly, we can, we can certainly add or subtract, or, I think the main thing that was, that came out of that study session though was the fact that this wasn't a mandate that we're moving forward with any of this. We're basically diving in and getting a little more information so that the board can make an informed decision down the road. Just trying to speed up the process a little bit, because we've been dragging our feet for a long time, and, you know, maybe some things on this list will work, and some of them we'll come to find just aren't feasible. And we're not going to know until we look at them a little further, because right now, these are, these are 20,000-foot views that we, that have been suggested by other firms that the district has hired as possibilities, but we don't know if they're a possibility. I mean, something completely different could come out of it. So, basically, what we're looking for tonight is just a go-ahead to start diving in a little deeper and see where it goes.
Madam Chair, are you looking for a motion for this, or just direction?
I think you should, yeah.
I'll make the motion that we, however we should correctly word this, but task our administrators with going through these items, seeing what they can start whittling away at, getting numbers where we need to. It's such a huge project that I don't think we can give too much direction. I think that'll need to be self-directed. Once you get into it, one thing's going to lead to another, just, I think, through natural means. Unless someone on the board has a real specific idea where you want to start, I think we let them, let the administrators meet and come up with a plan.
So, we just let them go along with their recommendation options?
And they can come back to us in a month with perhaps the first...
We can give you updates, see where things are at.
Is a month reasonable, or do you need for the first...
Well, like I said, we can give you updates. I mean, I can tell you, this is where we're at. You know, and just one thing to add to that, too. I mean, earlier tonight, we had a discussion about a baseball field. I mean, there's recommendations in there about athletic facilities, too. I mean, there's no reason why we can't find more information on that, too, as well.
Okay.
Glad you support whatever your motion is, Jim.
We're hoping Kathy can turn this into English.
Which is just basically give the administration...
Just to move forward, yep.
Move forward with their recommendations, and let us know where we go, or where we start heading, right?
Kathy, is that clear as mud?
Yep.
Let's move. We just got to, said that we're not making any decisions. Let's start making decisions.
Kathy, do you need me to reword it for you, or do you have the gist of what we want? We're just giving the authority to the administrators to meet and start whittling away at this list, gather the information that they need, make whatever phone calls or inquiries are necessary to move forward, and then they need to report back to us when they're able. Thank you very much. Can I get a support?
I got it. I support it.
All right. Any further discussion on that?
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Just to make it clear, this is just a motion to look at whether or not it's feasible. It's not a vote on, yes, we want to go one campus or two campuses.
Not part of the discussion at this point, right?
It's strictly just looking at, call it might move.
Just start whittling away at, yep. You're correct.
Thank you.
And I would also like to add that, that I was gone through your facilities plans, and there was really nothing out there that indicated a remodeling of both campuses to right-size the building for square footage. There was nothing in there to remodel both campuses to right-size them. Does anyone see it?
You were addressing me?
Yes, I was.
Yes.
I didn't see nothing in there that had both campuses being remodeled to, to meet our square footage needs.
Madam Chair, if I may again. So, one of the things that was discussed at the committee meeting was the fact that we all agreed that we have too much square footage, correct? So, if we all agreed on that, you know, in respect of the two-campus discussion, you know, would we down the road look at what, eliminating some square footage on some of the campus and remodeling, what that would look like as well, or?
I think we tried that exercise on, let me look back, I'll send that out to you.
DSGW?
Yeah. It was on there. If I'd like to read to you.
But that's on the website, I believe, also, at DSGW.
Oh, Madam Chair. I'll pass it on.
Thank you.
Any further discussion, questions, concerns?
Let's do it.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
No.
12.0, committee report. 12.1, safety committee.
I attended the safety committee meeting. We had it on March 2nd at 1:15. A lot of needs still existing. The last meeting was quite some time ago, it was in the spring of last year. They were able to, some things were accomplished from that time, and they went through their list of what things are still existing. There's still an issue with bleachers, some problems with the issues with having to always add those handrails and put them manually up, and having to take them down all the time when the bleachers are being used. Safety concerns with the football end zones, the bricks falling apart around the manual arts building, loose bricks in the Gilbert campus and Ebbell campuses. I guess the common theme was a lot of things continue to create safety issues, and because we're not making decisions in some areas, we're not making any decisions on fixing the stuff that's existing. So, I'm happy to know that we're exploring other things and starting to move forward with figuring out what our district's going to do. So, that will hopefully address some of that. The, there were four slips and falls recently that Mr. Carey brought up and was aware of. Some things able to try to rectify, and other things not so much. It was right around the melting and the refreezing of stuff, so. And, the, yeah, there was a common thing for the infield and outfield draining issues for the athletic, athletic concerns, the excessive hot radiators in the Nell Sheen, having entrance signage for campuses. That was a nice piece that was pointed out of, that will be able to hopefully be addressed so people know where to enter, and having it clearly marked a little bit better. And a lot of discussion regarding some of our key fobs, some issues that we're having with the electronics, some things from water leakage and getting, ruining some of our electronics for our security system. That has to be addressed, too.
Thank you. And on to 13.0, administrative report and information.
Enrollment today, 9:72. Little recognition for the week. Boys Southern down at State, they took 15th place out of 34 teams. They were the highest northern team. That includes City Grand Rapids and Tosa East. Individually, Shane Johnson took fourth in the 50, and seventh in the 100, medaled in both. Josh Weston, 23rd in the 100 butterfly. The Medley relay team also placed, scored points at 11th. The freestyle relay team also got points at 16th. Caleb Kelson, 20th place in the backstroke, and Robbie McCary, 20th place in the front stroke. After the meeting was over, Shane Johnson was named the Section 6A swimmer of the year. A couple announcements that were already stated by the young ladies earlier tonight. Boys and girls track and softball start, as we're probably just finishing up now. Golf and baseball are starting next Monday, and then Boys Tennessee starts the following Monday. Angie is out with the flu right now. So, we'll move on to Tom.
A couple of cool things going on in Gilbert. The sixth graders were working on a book project, and I apologize for the photo. It just looks really nice on my screen.
We need to get her screen in here, yeah.
But anyway, they designed these keychains to go along with their book projects. If anyone wants to see better pictures, they can talk to me afterwards. But anyway, they printed these keychains on 3D printers, and they really have some neat designs on them, so, anyway. Then...
I lost you.
Some of our sixth graders have been working on some coding with our Kai friend, and we've seen him before, but we're going to watch another minute, a minute and 15 seconds of him right now, if we can get the video.
I don't, I don't have a live one, can you?
Oh, there isn't? Then we will watch him. They actually have more interaction on this video with him, and they talk to, talk to him, and he responds, and he laughs and cries, so, anyway. On to the next one. In 7th grade, the art, and again, the photos aren't particularly great on the wall there. If you want to see them on my screen afterwards, come on over and see me. But they did some self-portraits, and they turned out really neat, so they're posted right now in the library. Some of the things going on.
Hey, over at Franklin, at the end of the month, we, they totaled up all the accelerator reader points for each class, and Ms. Young's class won the upper grades, and Ms. James' class won from the key through one. Total AR points. March 2nd was Dr. Seuss's birthday, and over there, that kind of green blob is Green Eggs and Ham that Mrs. Erickson's class ate. It was pretty disgusting, but kids liked it. Another thing that happened before the boys went off to state for swimming, they came and they had a little rally.
and they had a little rally in the hall, were able to high-five all the kids. It was pretty cool. A little shout-out for our PTA with Goldfinger, Goldfinger, well, Gold Fever Bingo is on Sunday, April 9th. Kelly will love that. You're not supposed to repeat that. Sunday, April 9th at 1 o'clock over at The Rock. They do have a meeting looking for people to help out that day, this Thursday at 6 o'clock for anyone that's interested. And I was asked to make sure that all the board members are personally invited to go to Bingo. They'd love to see you there. Couple upcoming things, March 14th, which is tomorrow, we have some board training with the MSBA. End of the third quarter is just a couple weeks away. Another thing, back in December, I posed the question if we're going to go with paperless board meetings or not. I guess we would just like, in either or, it doesn't matter to us, that kind of like the paperless thing. If we were going to do that, we need to, like I said back in December, we need to purchase some equipment for board members and some software. A lot of other districts are doing that. But...
Is that open for debate?
Yeah, that's not my decision.
My decision wasn't to go down, Madam Chair. It always kind of came up that we weren't going to justify spending the money on it right now until we decided to do some other things, I thought, but that was just my recollection of the...
Well, the way it went in December is we decided that we'd let the new board decide if they wanted to do that or if they wanted the paper.
But two years ago, we talked about board book, in that...
Two years ago, we talked about board book, but I brought it up again last year, last December.
Is the board book, is that like a, is there a calendar so we can have all the committees and things in there, too? What's the... Is that what they're at?
I don't know if there's a calendar in there.
Yeah, I think the presentation at the MSBA, I sat through one, and it's mostly just agenda items. I mean, you could, I think you could throw attachments in there, like your enclosures could be part of it.
Yeah, I mean, you can throw your attachments in there, so you just click on them. It's kind of like the Google Docs that I used to do, except it's a little easier.
Can you, is, can you take notes on there?
No.
It doesn't have that technology to actually add post-its on there?
Well, I mean, it's attached to an iPad or device, so you could probably, in that device...
But I just know some programs will actually, you can add post-its, you can, I don't know. Okay. Scribler.
I don't know that detail.
I mean, if we cared, we could probably give a demonstration of it if we wanted to go that far, but like I said, I think it always ended at the thing that it was an expense that...
It's a $4,000 a year.
Combined with paper?
Right.
Papered is? That's all I have tonight. Madam Chair.
That changes it. These people work a long way.
That's how you make your decision?
Money.
Serious. And we are not having our closed session?
No.
So, and turn motion to adjourn?
We'll move.
We are adjourned.